Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the East Atlanta Independent School District meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that is, that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by East Atlanta ISD Policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comment during the citizens input. Portion, the citizen input at the portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with electronic posted notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters at citizen input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting, often attended by students, and ask that, that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the ISLISD Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:01. We have a quorum with trustee Chris Hernandez, trustee Mike Dwyer, trustee Connie Woodruff, trustee Catherine Lucero, and myself, Charlie Bustillos. Trustee Hagerty and trustee Ochoa are unable to join us and are considered excused. It has became a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by Junior ROTC Color Guard from JM Hanks High School. The color, the color card commander is Leonardo Cervantes. Color Guard members are Tatum Butler, William Covey, and Marcus McConnell. The pledge leader is Cadet 1st Lieutenant Evelyn Duran. Will you please stand for the presentation of colors, the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas State, Texas Pledge of Allegiance, in a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge of the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Latore, do we have recognitions in instructions on this evening?
Yes, good evening, Vice President Bustillos, members of the board, and esteemed guests. I'd like to invite or turn over the responsibility to our chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Delatorre. We have three recognitions this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais. Audience members, please remain seated until all recognitions are complete. Thank you. Our first recognition tonight celebrates an exceptional team of Valle Verde early college high school students whose biochemistry project earned second-place honors at this year's Texas Science and Engineering Fair in College Station. Their project, titled Medicine in the Nanosphere: Evaluating the Toxicity of Red Gold, Blue Gold, and Silver Nanoparticles, impressed judges at the highest levels, and they were invited to attend the prestigious Governor's Science and Technology Champions Academy this summer with all expenses paid. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome our state science fair winner from Valle Verde Early College High School. Let's hear it for Sarah Calindo. She is accompanied by teacher Sarah Welsh and principal Claudia Canaba Flores. Congratulations to the Spartans. Our next recognition celebrates the outstanding talents of our high school musicians from five high schools who earned places on this year's All-State Choir and Band Ensembles, the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. Selected from a pool of more than 70,000 talented vocalists and musicians across the state, these students rose to the top and performed alongside Texas's finest at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio. Ladies and gentlemen, please help us in congratulating our brilliant student musicians. Let's begin with Del Valle High School. Please welcome mixed choir vocalist Gabriel Sigaroa. And Alfredo Roman. They are accompanied by choir teacher Lisa Serna and principal Valerie Hairston. Let's hear it for the Conquistadores. From Eastwood High School, please welcome treble choir vocalist Marbella Leiva. She is accompanied by choir teacher Dominique Velez and principal Bonita Torres. Congratulations to the Troopers. Next, from Hanks High School, please welcome mixed choir vocalist Jason Castillo. 6A Concert Band Alto Saxophone musician Ryan Dominguez. Tenor Bass Choir vocalist Francisco Lopez. 5A Symphonic Band Trombone musician James McCormick. And 5A Percussion Ensemble musician Nathan Navarro. They are accompanied by choir teacher Orlando Guerrero, band director Horacio Gomez, and principal Daniel Gutierrez. Let's hear it again for the Knights. From Parkland High School, please welcome Tenor Bass Choir vocalist Michael Hayden. He is accompanied by choir teacher Unmi Garza and principal Javier Salgado. Congratulations to the Matadors. And from the Young Women's Leadership Academy, please welcome 6A Symphonic Band String Bass musician Kira Smith. She is accompanied by choir teacher Amy Smith and principal Melinda Villalobos. Let's hear it again for the Transformers. Our next recognition highlights the impressive talent of five high school mariachi ensembles, which advanced to compete at the 2025 UIL State Mariachi Festival after earning Division I ratings at the UIL Region 22 Contest in January. Our mariachi groups from Del Valle High School, Eastwood High School, Riverside High School, and the Young Women's Leadership Academy took the stage with incredible heart and skill at the state festival and brought home Division II ratings of excellence. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome representatives from our Division II mariachi groups, beginning with Del Valle High School. Mariachi Los Conquistadores not only earned top ratings, but six students received Outstanding Individual Performer Awards. They are Mariana Barbosa. Jose Pablo Carillo. Chantel Escorsa. Brandon Flores. Isaac Jara. And Edward Marquez. They are accompanied by director Valentin Gonzalez and principal Valerie Hairston.
I need that.
I'm sorry.
No.
Congratulations to the Conquistadores. Next, from Eastwood High School, we have mariachi Reyna. Representing the student musicians are Daniel Loyah. Joaquín Madrid. Felix Montalvo. Andrea Torres. And winning an Outstanding Individual Performer Award for her top-tier performance at the state festival is Maria Fernanda Ávila. They are accompanied by director Amy Hakes and principal Bonita Torres. Congratulations to the Troopers. Next, we have Riverside High School. Please welcome mariachi Estrella de Riverside. Representing the ensemble are Anthony Diaz. Fernando Payán. Luis Pareda. And Andre Ramirez. They are accompanied by director Ramón Acosta and principal Victor Lada.
Which side is this?
Which side is this?
Let's hear it one more time for the Rangers. Now, let's welcome representatives from the Young Women's Leadership Academy's Cielo Azul, beginning with Hazel Alvarado. Mia Alvidres. Maritza Diaz. Mariel Martinez. And Angelica Ramos. They are accompanied by director Amy Smith and principal Melinda Villalobos. Congratulations to the Transformers. Our final honor this evening goes to mariachi Los Travadores from Hank's High School. After its performance at the State Mariachi Festival, this gifted band proudly distinguished itself as the best in El Paso by earning Division One ratings of superior from all three judges, an achievement no other local high school was able to match. In addition, vocalist Jason Castillo was singled out for his exceptional performance with an Outstanding Individual Performer Award. What a powerful way to represent our district with pride, talent, and tradition. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate the outstanding members of mariachi Los Travadores, beginning with Aiden Álvarez, Jason Castillo, Teresa Acosta, Juan Murillo, Gael Márquez, Juan Ornelas, Christopher Gutierrez, Dylan Felix, Austin Barrios, Claudia Delgado, Alyssa Duron, Josabeth Hernández, Zaydek Hernández, Erin Ibanez, Eva Lincoln, Sophie Silva, Ray Lee Muñoz, Isabella Recio, Jesús Fabián Salas, Eileen Serán, Isela Trujillo, and Emily Coat. They are accompanied by their directors Orlando Guerrero, Juan Contreras, Carla Urias Cudar, and Dr. Osvaldo Altamirano, and Principal Daniel Gutierrez. Congratulations to mariachi Los Travadores and the Knights. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Lucero, do we have any citizens' input this evening?
Yes, Vice President, we have two speakers. Our first one being Bertha Silva, General.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bertha Silva, and I just have a few general inquiries and questions. But before I begin, I would like to thank our board for what you do. You are a governing body, and we appreciate the work you do, no matter what the differences or what have you. Anyhow, one of my main concerns is what's going on through the country. There's the ICE raids in the states and the communities. My concern are students, so I am afraid about that. So I would like some feedback from the board as to what your plans are to help us, I guess in a way be ready in case they do show up to our campus.
Ms. Silva, during open comment, the board cannot engage with the speaker.
Okay. All right. Well, that's about it, so that's what I want to say. And thank you for everything, what you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Senor. School funding board resolution.
Good evening, Vice President Charlie Bustillos, Board of Trustees, Dr. Delatorre. I actually had President Ochoa there, but we won't go there. He's not here today, so. My name is Jeff Senor, and I proudly represent the members of the Asleta Teachers Association. I'm here to express my deep concern about the continued push for school vouchers in Texas and what that means for our schools, for our students, our educators, and our community alike. There's been a lot of talk lately about increasing the basic student allotment, which currently sits at $6,160 per student. And while any increase in funding is welcomed, but let's be honest, when private and charter schools are being handed $10,000 per student in taxpayer voucher money with no accountability, no transparency, no strings attached, the increase to the student allotment of a few hundred dollars feels less like progress and more like a slap in the face. Our schools are required to serve every single student. It doesn't matter what their background is, what their needs are, or what challenges they face. We take them all, and we do our best to educate them. But under the voucher scheme, private and charter schools get to cherry pick their students. They will gladly accept a student with a $10,000 voucher until that student struggles academically or has a learning disability or needs additional support. And then, that student is shown the door and is sent back to our schools, and now with zero dollars. Not even the basic student allotment, because the private and the charter schools, they're allowed to keep that $10,000 voucher. We are left to provide the education, the support services, and the resources for that child, all with zero funding and more responsibility. This is not just a policy issue, it's a moral issue. Taxpayer dollars should be used for public schools, for schools that answer to the public, for schools that play by the rules. If there's money to give away, then give it to the districts that are actually doing the work. When that happens, we can push for compensation that truly values our hourly employees, our teachers, nurses, librarians, OTs, PTs, psychs, diags, administrators, and all educators alike. I urge this board to continue standing strong for our students, for our educators, and for our local public schools. Reject any effort to support vouchers and advocate loudly for full and fair funding for the work our Asleta Independent District Educators do here every single day. Thank you very much.
Concludes our speakers.
Thank you. Now we move to the 2024-25 Annual Announcement of the Task B: Continuing Education Credits. Under the Board Education Rule, completing requiring continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As a Board Vice President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the requiring continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the requirements to continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are eight training areas for the board members continuing education. Local District Orientation, orientation to the Texas Education Code, post legislative update to the Texas Education Code, Team Building, additional continuing education, evaluating student academic performances and setting goals, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other measure of children. School Safety. To the extent applicable to each board member, I will announce the completion or deficiency as to required training. For members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled timely training and those who have not yet scheduled the training. At the conclusion of the announcement, I will announce any board member's training is exceeded excess of continuing education requirements. Local District Orientation. For the time period covering by this announcement, or new board members were required to complete local district orientation training, not applicable. Orientation to the Texas Education Code. No new board members were required to complete orientation to the Texas Education Code training for the time period covered by the announcement, not applicable. Post Legislative Update to the Texas Education Code. For the time prior covering by the announcement, no board members were required to complete the post legislative update to the Texas Education Code training, not applicable. Team Building. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Trustees, Trustee Carlos Bustillos, Trustee Connie Woodruff, Trustee Shane Haggerty, Trustee Mike Dwyer, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, Trustee Chris Hernandez, Trustee Catherine R. Lucero. Additional Continuing Education. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements. Trustee Carlos Bustillos, Trustee Connie Woodruff, Trustee Shane Haggerty, Trustee Mike Dwyer, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, Trustee Chris Hernandez. The following board member is deficient in meeting the additional continuing education requirements. Trustee Catherine Lucero. Evaluating Student Academic Performance and Setting Goals. The following board members have completed the biannual training on evaluating students' academic performance and setting goals. Trustee Carlos Bustillos, Trustee Connie Woodruff, Trustee Shane Haggerty, Trustee Mike Dwyer, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, Trustee Chris Hernandez. The following board members are deficient in meeting the requirement of biannual training on evaluating student academic performances and setting goals. Trustee Catherine R. Lucero. Identifying and Reporting Abuse, Trafficking, and Other Merits of Children. The following board members have completed the biannual training on identifying and requiring abuse and trafficking. Trustee Carlos Bustillos, Trustee Connie Woodruff, Trustee Shane Haggerty, Trustee Mike Dwyer, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, Trustee Chris Hernandez, Trustee Catherine R. Lucero. School Safety. The following board members have completed the biannual training on school safety. Trustee Carlos Bustillos, Trustee Connie Woodruff, Trustee Shane Haggerty, Trustee Mike Dwyer, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, Trustee Chris Hernandez. The following board members are deficient in meeting the requirements biannual training on school safety. Trustee Catherine R. Lucero.
Vice President Bustillos, I want to let you know that I did complete this course, and I turned in the certificate to our Board Secretary, however, didn't make the agenda in time, but this course is completed for the safety.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Lucero. Exceeding Requirements: Continuing Education. Board Members. Chris Hernandez exceed the requirements amount of continuing education training by one additional hour. Board Member Mike Dwyer exceeded the requirements amount of continuing education training by three additional hours. Board Member Carlos Bustillos exceeded the requirements amount of continuing education training by two and three quarters additional hours. Board Member Connie Woodruff exceeds the requirements of amount of continuing education training by eight and a half, by eight and a quarter additional hours. Board Member Cruz Ochoa exceeds the requirements amount of continuing education training by eleven and three quarters additional hours. Board Member Shane Haggerty exceeds the requirements of the amount of continuing education training by a quarter additional hours. And that concludes that. Onto our board workshop. Dr. De La Torre, do we have a presentation this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Vice President Bustillos, members of the board, esteemed guests. I'm going to ask Ms. Elizabeth Beebo to come on up. And while she's doing that, I'm going to set the stage for the board, should they have any questions for Ms. Beebo. The contract for our employee health benefit plan will expire on December 31st. It has been our plan for the last five years. This necessitates the selection of a fully insured carrier or a third-party administrator for a self-funded plan for services to be effective January 1st of 2026. Administrative fees typically around $2 million. Claims, $54 million, are paid from the Health and Life Insurance Benefits Fund. That fund is comprised of contributions from both the employees and the district. Working closely with the district's benefit consultant, Ms. Beebo, the district issued an RFP in January of 2025. The district's insurance oversight committee was informed and provided details about the solicitation. For these medical components, the district received proposals from four providers. An evaluation committee met just in March of 2025 to review all proposals received. Based on initial evaluations, especially regarding meeting the district's needs, best and final offers were requested from the short list. Based on that evaluation criteria, Aetna ACO was ranked as providing the best value for the district. Of note is that Aetna ACO is the very same provider that this district has had for the last five years. Employees have consistently supported and applauded the service and the process, the programs, access to doctors, cost for prescriptions from this carrier. It's very familiar to them. So it will really, I think, create a very smooth transition should the board decide to go in this direction. Our employees are very familiar with this provider. With that, if there are any questions relative to the details, Mrs. Beebo, I think, can answer most of the questions. And as I mentioned before, unfortunately, Ms. Camberne cannot be with us this evening. She had a family emergency. So either Ms. Beebo or I will try and answer any and all of your questions.
Thank you. Good evening, President Vassio, or Vice President Vassio, esteemed members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. I am Liz Beebo. I am from Hub International. We are your employee benefits consulting team. And we work with staff on understanding and analyzing the planned performance of your health plan and benefit program, as well as facilitating data-driven decisions. My charge this evening is to talk through the process, which we went through as Dr. De La Torre mentioned in the RFP. As an overview, currently, your Asleta ISD Medical Pharmacy Employee Assistance Program, the Flexible Spending Accounts, Health Savings Accounts, and COBRA are administered under a master service agreement with Aetna CVS. This contract expires on December 31st, 2025. One note, as Dr. De La Torre mentioned, you have a tiered benefit plan. So employees are able to use Tier 1 Accountable Care Organization benefits with tenant at a lower cost share, or they can choose to use the Broad Aetna Network, which is classified as Tier 2 and has a slightly higher cost share. Some things that impact the health plan spend and things that are considered in this RFP are administrative expenses. And these would be for the administration of the plan. Your medical claim spend, which is driven, as we're reviewing results, by outpatient facility costs, emergency room, radiology, and behavioral health. The disease burden of the plan is driven primarily by chronic conditions, specifically high blood pressure, high cholesterol, obesity, and diabetes. On the pharmacy side, the main driver of your pharmacy trend is the brand medications for the treatment of obesity and diabetes, as well as increased utilization of specialty medications, which are typically medications that are injected or administered by a practitioner and things for treatment of cancer, for example. When we began the review of the RFP, we wanted to just level set for the team, the financial snapshot. We're using, we use for the RFP process 12 months of claims data, which was completed through January 2025. We are using a stop-loss premium expense increase estimate of 15%. And then, our trend assumption, taking us from 2025 expected cost to 2026, we used 8.8%. From a process perspective, once the request for proposal results were received and tabulated, they were reviewed in several different meetings with several of the stakeholders. The first was an overview with the purchasing and risk management team. We then had a meeting with the insurance oversight committee where we reviewed the results of each of the bidder responses. And we allowed for questions during the presentation. And then, at the end of the presentation, we had a question and answer session. The Oversight Committee was asked to provide a response to a survey before they left the meeting, which was then provided to the Evaluation Committee. The Insurance Oversight Committee was not a decision-maker in the process, but those results were used in the Evaluation Committee discussions. I'll talk a little bit about the Insurance Oversight Committee in just one minute. Once the Evaluation Committee met, they scored the bidder's proposals and determined who they would like to invite back for finalists. There was an allowed best and final offer period where those finalists could improve their offers if they desired. And then, there was on March 26th, a presentation of the finalists to the Evaluation Committee. The Evaluation Committee then scored the award for the recommendation this evening. The Insurance Oversight Committee was comprised of several stakeholders within the employee population, as you can see depicted here on the slide. There were 50 participants in that meeting. We did a comprehensive presentation to that team of folks. And as I mentioned, they were allowed to ask any and all questions that they wanted. And then, they were asked to complete a survey that we could then provide to the Evaluation Committee as input. On the survey, one of the questions that they were asked was whether or not they participated in the health plan. And you can see from this slide that 72% of the folks do in fact, did in fact participate in the health plan. Most of the folks that do not are because they have coverage available to them elsewhere. The team wanted to make sure that they understood the ACO tenant arrangement and whether or not that met the expectations and the needs of the employees. There was a question about how important broad network access was to employees. And while it was somewhat important to half of the team, there was a small sliver that said it was very important. Again, I'll just pause here to say that employees do have access to the broad network today as well. And finally, after the Evaluation Committee met and made the determination on who they would want to recommend, to summarize some of the impacts of this process and where there have been improvements to the district. The first is that during the best and final, we were able to negotiate a five-year rate guarantee, administrative fee rate guarantee. The original proposal was for three years and then escalators in year four and five. We also were able to have the administrative fee holidays extended from just one year in the original proposal to extending that to year two and three, providing cash flow favorability to the district. On the pharmacy rebate contract, currently, the district receives quarterly rebates from the, on the pharmacy contract. They are lump sum payments. We have negotiated to turn those into per employee per month administrative credit so that rather than getting a lump sum payment every three months, the district will have the benefit of an administrative fee credit, which also helps with cash flow on a monthly basis. Also, as part of the contract, we negotiated improved unit cost pricing on the pharmacy and improved rebate dollars. And we're able to negotiate that those contracts would take effect in October of 2025, rather than on January 1st, 2026. And that allows for an additional $500,000 in savings to the district. And finally, on the pricing piece, we do have funds that are available to the district to support various health and wellness activities. And we were able to, and those are annual allowances from the carrier. And we were able to increase those allowances so that we'll be able to provide additional programs around health and wellness to your employees. On the administrative side, the decision for the Evaluation Committee was if they wanted to keep the medical and pharmacy under the same contract, so employees use the same carrier for their medical and pharmacy, or choose to have the medical administered by one vendor and the pharmacy by a different. The Evaluation Committee contemplated that and believed that the participants would have a better experience if it was kept under one administration. Also, currently, you have two onsite representatives that are able to answer questions for employees on both medical and pharmacy. And keeping the administration combined with one carrier allows that to continue. And then, of course, efficiency to the staff on billing, banking, and plan document production. And with that, I will say thank you for your time. And I appreciate being here to help you understand the process.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Well, first of all, thank you very much for being here and giving us that great presentation. My question is, for YISD employees that are currently enrolled in a health benefits program, what are the changes that they will see? What's going to change for them?
On the employee benefits program in and of itself, so access to the pharmacy network, access to medical providers, chronic condition support programs, none of that will change. If you approve the recommendation, then all of that would remain consistent with what they have today.
So there'll be zero changes? Everything will be exactly the same from the employee perspective?
I just want to make sure that I level set the answer and don't create... From a experience of the provider network, there will be no changes. For accessing the pharmacies that they have access to today would remain the same if you chose the same carrier.
So it sounds like there will be zero changes from the employee perspective?
Experience, mhm.
Does that include cost to individual employees? Is that all staying the same?
No. That's entirely up to the board to decide whether or not any increase to the premium as a result of either inflation or as a result of services simply being more expensive moving forward. There are really only three things that can happen. One, you can do a cost pass-through, which means if it goes up 10%, the employees get a letter informing them that their premium, their monthly premium has gone up 10%. Not very popular. There is also what's called a cost share, where the employer and the employee share the increase. So if the increase is 10%, we decide that it's excessive for the employee. And so, we assume 5%. Then they get a letter or a notice indicating that their monthly premium has gone up 5%. And then, there's what we've done for about 11 years in a row. And that is that the employer assumes the full burden of the increase for that healthcare plan.
Is that decision being made tonight?
No.
When is that decision being made?
When you're about to adopt the budget.
That's part of the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So today is just the endorsement of supporting our employees with the same health and welfare benefit plan or plan design would be the best way to describe it.
The plan design stays exactly the same relative to any increased cost. That's something that Ms. Camberne will include in the conversation with the board so that it's viewed through the lens of total compensation. What you never want to do is you never want to give employees a raise only to find out a month later that their increase to the premium has wiped out the raise and then some. So they both have to be looked at at the same time so that you can make an informed decision. In my experience, what I have found is that health benefits for many of our employees are visceral. They're very, very important, sometimes more important than an increase on the salary schedule. So we have to be mindful of that. What's preventing us from even having that conversation, and you'll hear from Priscilla and you'll hear from me, is that until we know what's happening at this legislative session, we don't know how much new money we have available to, A, address the deficit, B, address requirements that some of these new monies have. They're not non-discretionary. They're discretionary in some cases. So for example, there is a proposal, sorry. There's a proposal that says you may get a basic allotment of $6,555. That's the current proposal that passed in the House today. So that's an increase of $395 of new money. However, 40% of that increase has got to go to the compensation of teachers, nurses, counselors, and librarians. And from that 40%, 75% of that 40% has to go on their schedule. So all of that has to be in front of you as a board before you can start deciding where you're going to make the investment. And then, there are other increases, other new revenue that they're proposing, but they haven't arrived at the amount or the weighted ADA. So for example, for special ed... So for example, for special ed, one special ed student would get the basic allotment, which would be the $6,555, but depending on their IEP or ARD, it could be 1.2, 1.4, 1.6, depending on the severity of it. So the next step, and why we're meeting with you twice in May, is that today, that bill is headed to the Senate. And what happens now, the Senate will likely not accept the House bill in its totality. They're going to take exception to some things, and they're going to prefer some of the ideas that they came up with. So they're going to select two smaller committees to go to work and try and create one bill out of each of their separate and distinct bills, and then that would be the bill that we would hope would pass and that we'd have before us so that Ms. Camberne could do a draw, which would mean she could, in detail, go right down the line and tell you how much new money we're getting for comp ed, emerging bilingual, safety and security, special ed, basic allotment, there's one other one. Anyway, and y'all would see all of that in a big pot, and then you would see it in the aggregate. Prior to today, what I have on my presentation were the numbers that we had been told they were going to present today, just for illustrative purposes. If those numbers would have held, and they didn't, and they would have passed that bill, we were looking at something closer to $20 million of new money for next year, right? Yes. I think it's nicer now, but we're not sure. I think it may be nicer now, but we don't know what the Senate is going to do. And all of this is predicated on Governor Abbott getting the voucher bill passed first before he even entertains any of this. So I guess to make an already too-long answer shorter, sorry. No, sir, you are not arriving at any decision relative to the investment.
Thank you for that answer, Dr. De La Torre. I just want to say I learned a little bit about the insurance oversight committee. I'd like to thank everybody that participated, and that looks like a lot of great work was done. I will be following that recommendation for tonight's vote. But you heard Dr. De La Torre, there's still a lot of decisions that haven't been made. All employees of YISD, your input is extremely important. Please reach out, give us a call, email us. Insurance Oversight Committee members, please reach out to this board that has to make that very important upcoming decision. That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Hernan, is anybody else, any other questions?
Yes, I just want to pay back, just to make sure, this is, this is a newbie for me, but with my fellow colleague, trustee Hernan, this to just verify here publicly that, and if I'm understanding the discussion in your presentation, that the benefits, the benefit package to include pharmacy will not have increases in co-pays, all that's going to stay the same as they, as they're used to receiving? Am I understanding that? Or is just simply for your administration of the program, is what we're discussing tonight?
It's simply for the administration of the program.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Bustillos, member of the board, if I can have that presentation come up, and with one caveat, I am going to try and do it justice, but I do not pretend to be the authority and the expert to the extent that Ms. Camberne is. So bear with me, and by that I mean be nice to me when you start asking questions. Let me see if I can move it from up here, and we'll go through sort of what we had planned for you. We were going to just touch on the timeline. We are still adhering to our timeline. What you're going to see in April is a flurry of activity in, in Austin. It was suggested that you could have a bill as early as late next week, probably, not likely, but it's not looking like we're going to be held hostage with special sessions in June. They are aggressive and ambitious, and they really want to get this done so they can go back to their homes, and I don't think any of them want to go back to their community not having done right by, by education, even though I think it's debatable when we talk about vouchers, whether or not we're doing right by our communities and by the traditional public school system. As you requested, we will be meeting on two different days in May. The first is our regular board meeting, which will include a workshop. That workshop will include a discussion around the budget. The 21st is dedicated entirely to the budget, so the entire evening will be to discuss the budget. We are optimistic that maybe by May 21st, we will have the numbers, and we can begin to work through that. The plan, of course, is to pass a budget no later than June 30th. We have pushed out our regular workshop and board meeting to June 24th in the event that the legislative session has not delivered, and if necessary, and we've done this in the past, we'll come back on the 29th and 30th if that's what is required, because under the law, we're required to adopt a budget. So the legislative update that we were prepared, or Ms. Camberne was prepared to go through with you, I want you to look at these numbers as if it's mayonnaise, as if they're written with mayonnais on a hot summer sidewalk, okay? These are the categories that, or the elements that make up what's being discussed in Austin, and the first is the basic allotment. Now, the $9.7 million, and speaking to Ms. Camberne, is based on a $6,555 basic allotment or an increase of $395 of new money. So that's not likely going to change, but it can when it gets to the Senate. The special education adjusted allotment, now the asterisk, what that tells you is that this is non-discretionary money. So that money can only be spent on students with special needs. It cannot be spent anywhere else. $4 million is based on today's requirements, today's law. It does not include any changes to the weighted average attendance. I think we're operating with the premise that we will come in with a 94% ADA as we have the last two years. The dyslexia allotment is the allotment we get now, not what we may get. State comp ed allotment is what we get now and not what they may decide to give us. There is a rumor that they've taken the state comp ed money and that they've redirected it to early education. And by that, what they're doing is instead of the district paying for half of our pre-K programs, the state is offering to pay for the entire thing, which would mean that the money that we currently invest in our half of the pre-K programs would come back into the general fund, and it would be available for something else. Bilingual ed, it's a little interesting. It looks like they have kicked the can down the road. They are not proposing at, at the House of Representatives, they're not proposing any increase to emerging bilingual students or EL students until year two. Not year one, but year two. Career tech ed is as you see it, and again, it is not discretionary. The fine arts allotment is a modest allotment, but that is available for fine arts. And then transportation is very low. So you see that prior to the meetings today, we were looking at about $21 million of new revenue for '25, '26. What we were not anticipating is anything in pre-kindergarten, that now has changed. The teacher certification incentive is not something that Ms. Russell Garcia tolerates. All of our teachers have their credentials and their certificates, but that isn't true throughout the state of Texas. They waive examination and certification fees. These ideas are driven by the fact that there is a significant teacher shortage throughout the state of Texas, but especially in rural areas. At present, we don't participate in the teacher incentive allotment, and it wouldn't make a difference because they have moved that money into year two under the current proposal. And we maximize our CCMR outcome bonuses now, and we expect to see, according to Dr. Brenda Chacon, a CCMR rate of about 90, maybe 91% in year, I guess it would be year '24, they're a year behind. So to put it in a narrative, here it goes. Here's your increased compensation percentage from the prior year. You are required to spend, at the time it was either 30% or 40%, they have submitted 40% or approximately 8.25 million, excuse me, $11 million. Of those $11 million, I've said 75% must be paid to teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. That means at least 8.25 million would be dedicated to those job classifications, leaving approximately 2.75 million, or 25%, that could be used to pay hourly staff, and now no counselors, no librarians, no nurses, and of course, administrators are the only remaining category. It requires districts to pay first-year teachers who are certified more than first-year teachers who are not. Again, we don't hire, as a practice, non-certified teachers. And then again, for those rural areas and those areas that are having a hard time attracting and retaining teachers, they have made a distinction between a, a standard certificate, an intern, and a residency certificate, and those are the numbers that they've come up with to try and keep those candidates. Any questions on that? And the reason there probably isn't any more to say about that is because that all went away during the day with the new House bill two that they've come up with. It changed pretty significantly. What we're looking at now would be, under the current law, would normally be, local sources would make up $63,440,000. In our case, in the Isleta Independent School District, that is right at about 17% of the total. The 299.7 come from the state, and then about $5 million would come from the federal government. Every indication is that the federal government, regardless of what's happening to the Department of Ed, is simply going to pass the money through the state. I hope it passes through the state, right? Under HB2, the one that I just said is no longer in place, we would see an additional $9,920,000 after we take care of our obligation to the teachers, nurses, counselors, with at least 75% of the 40%. If you add that $9,920,000, the net increase in revenue over last year would be $378 million, or right at $10 million more of money that we would have at our discretion to, to invest in the operating budget. And then it's kind of broken out the way it was prior to that. So under the old model, $10 million is about, not even about, it's half of the deficit, less than half of the deficit that we incurred last year. So it's not a lot. Of course, what's not included in here is the special ed, the impact of pre-K, and all of those buckets that I just talked about, which would likely increase that nine to something other than nine, and we'd have to wait and see. And then I think this is just another way of looking at it. The basic allotment has been increased by $398, requires 40% be used for teacher pay increases, now includes teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors, at least 75% of that, 25% is at our discretion, creates special education intensity of service funding, we just don't know what the weights are yet, full pre-K funding in exchange for not increasing state comp ed. So it's not that we don't get comp ed, we just don't see an increase to comp ed. We'll still keep getting our comp ed dollars for our neediest students. There's a fine arts allotment and increases teacher pay for new teachers. Funding weights for emerging bilinguals, as I said, won't happen until year two of the biennium, and they're on the House floor pending a third reading tomorrow. At this time, Mrs. Priscilla Di Mata, who is, who's following all of this on a daily basis and through her contacts in Austin and here locally, will walk you through some other bills. I think I may have just walked into her presentation.
Sure, thank you, Dr. De La Torre. Good evening, Vice President, Mr. Bustillos, and board members. It's great to be with you tonight. Today was a very eventful day at the Capitol, and so I've been tracking, in addition to HB2, plenty of other bills. To date, more than 10,000 bills have been filed in this legislative session. Approximately 1,500 of those bills relate to public education. And so, as you can imagine, there, there's a lot of activity, a lot of debate. House Bill Two, of course, is probably the most important school finance bill that we've been tracking. And so I think Dr. De La Torre highlighted a lot of the amendments that were made today and approved and are heading to the Senate next. My understanding is there's a third reading tomorrow, so we can expect maybe some more changes to House Bill Two as soon as, as soon as tomorrow. In addition, SB2 was considered soon after House Bill Two. SB2 is the education savings account bill. As of the time that this board meeting started, they were still debating SB2 on the floor, so that's still going on. I wanted to bring two other bills to your attention. House Bill 500 is essentially the supplemental appropriations bill. It takes into account the surplus money, the general funds that are held by TEA, and what House Bill 500 does for us is essentially it gives us back the money that unfortunately we lost through the SARS program. When the Medicaid rules were changed, it hurt us significantly, close to the tune of $7 million. House Bill 500 acknowledges that loss and gives us back some money. How much? It hasn't been spelled out yet, but I believe they're setting aside significant money, and I think I have it here in, in the presentation, $934,500. So some of that money, we're hoping, will make it to, to Isleta ISD. So far, there's been great support. I know Dr. De La Torre reached out to the El Paso delegation. In fact, he submitted a public comment in support of the bill, and so far, it's, it's receiving support across the aisles. So we're, we're very hopeful that it, it becomes law. The other bill is the committee substitute of Senate Bill 260, and this is the one that's going to give us those additional funds for school safety, the school safety allotment. So far, we're looking at a bill that would provide an increase from $10 per student to 14, and additionally, instead of the $15,000 we get per campus, we'd be looking at $37,000. So. So, more money, maybe not enough, but more money, I think is on the way. And we'll keep tracking these bills. And I want to assure you, if something groundbreaking happens and these get passed through both chambers, we'll inform this board promptly through a communique and make sure that you're among the first to know. Are there any questions for, for myself? Okay, thank you.
First of all, thank you, Dr. De La Torre. I thought you did a fantastic job. I think Ms. Cameron would be proud.
Thank you. I was nervous.
You did, you did great. I just want to give a few comments. I think we're going to be doing a lot of work in, in May. We got two meetings for that. But I just, I just want to prepare us for what we're walking into. I believe that conversation in May is going to get very uncomfortable. We were just shown projected revenue. I have to say, I'm very skeptical of that projection. That is because the projection we received last year was off. We just got a financial statement that's in the agenda packet today that's available to the public. That says our expenditures exceeded revenues by thirty-three million dollars as of February twenty-eight, twenty-five. And by the end of the fiscal year, our fund balance will see a reduction of forty-eight point eight million. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we had sixty-one million dollars. We're seeing a reduction of forty-eight point eight million dollars by the end of this fiscal year. I think one of the big problems was being extremely optimistic. And as we go into these May workshops, I think we have to do the exact opposite. It's much easier to err on the side of caution than, and then deal with, oh, we did better than what we expected. And, and we can implement those new funds much easier than working the other way around. Being optimistic and hopeful, and then being disappointed with actual revenues and being in the situation that we are in now that we're going to be learning more about in May. Please, any community members, union members, any employees, this is the time to reach out before we get to those May meetings, so that we, as a board, are able to voice your concerns, your questions, and desires, given the current situation. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. We do got a lot of work ahead of us. We do got. Moving on. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre, for that presentation.
Of course. You're welcome.
We will now discuss the items listed. Oh, first of all, you want to take a bathroom break? You all good, or we want to move on? Okay. We will now discuss the agenda items as listed from the post-notice of regular meeting of the Setta Independent School District Board of Trustees for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and related recommendation motions with the Superintendent Executive Cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information throughout the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on set items at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting of trustees. Now, please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull any items. Consent. Consider approval of the minutes for the Board of Trustees Workshop and Regular Board Meeting on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from six P M. Number two, monthly financial statements and bond projects, bond project report for February twenty twenty-five. Number three, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six instructional material allotment. Number four, approval of Y S D contract two zero two five zero one five seven with Communities and Schools of El Paso Inc. Onto policy items. Policy item number one, Policy C A A Local Fiscal Management Goals and Objectives Financial Ethics. Number two, Policy C D A Local Other Revenues Investments. Number three, Policy C Y Local Intellectual Property. Number four, Policy D H Local Employee Standards of Conduct. Number five, Policy E H B Local Curriculum Design Special Programs. Number six, Policy E H B B Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students. Number seven, Policy F F G Students Welfare Child Abuse and Neglect. We're number eight. On page five of ten. Number eight, Policy G K A Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. Number nine, Policy C F C Local Accounting Audits. And then we move to the action items. Number one, Board Resolution in Support of Legislative Action to adequately, adequately re-increase public school funding and reject vouchers or education savings accounts schemes for private schools. Number two, Award Y S D Solicitation Two Two Five Zero Zero Nine R F P Employee Health Benefits for medical benefits, third-party administration, and related components pharmacy benefits, manager services, and stop loss. Number three, Nomination of Texas Association of School Board Twenty Twenty-Five Superintendent of the Year. Number four, Authorization for Sale of Real Property Location Near Catwalder T L C C Campus. And then closed session discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. Thank you. Okay. For the consent, for consent, the order of the agenda has been, has been approved. May I have an electronic, electronic motion on the remaining consent agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by the administration?
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. The mover was Ms. Woodruff, and second by Ms. Lucero.
It'll be on bottom of page.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. We have five approved and zero no. Sorry. So then, which is the next one? Yeah, that's what I was. Pulled, policy items, okay. Right here, right? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Since, since the order of the agenda has been approved, may I have an electronic motion on the remaining policy agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration? Well, there it is.
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve the policy agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
All votes, all votes are in. We have five approved and zero no. Thank you. So then now, now we move on to the closed session? No? Action. Sorry, my bad. Okay, action items. I'm trying to hurry up here. Let's see, the board resident, action items. The Board Resilient in Support of Legislative Action to Adequately Increase the Public School Funding and Reject Vouchers for Educational Savings Accounts Schemes for Private Schools. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Vice President. I'm sorry?
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. So this, this resolution is dear to my heart. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody involved in putting this resolution together, especially the members of Y T A, President Señor. Thank you for reaching out to me and, and discussing the importance of this resolution. You know, last year, I passionately made the plea that, you know, the fight isn't with the board. The fight's with the state of Texas. And though we may have some disagreements on what we can do as a board, I think I was very excited that I was able to find, we were able to find common ground, and I fully support this resolution. And if, if I may read it. So the, this is the resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Isleta Independent School District in Support of Legislative Action to Adequately Increase Public School Funding and Reject Voucher or S F Funding Schemes for Private Schools. Whereas the Texas Constitution, Article Seven, Section One, mandates the Texas Legislature to establish and make suitable provision for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools. And whereas the Isleta Independent School District Board of Trustees believe that public education is a critical contributor to quality of life and overall health of Texas communities. And whereas the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees believe there is a direct correlation between the Texas economy and a successful public school system. However, Texas currently ranks in the bottom ten states in per student funding. Whereas despite inflation and rising costs for Texas school districts, the Texas Legislature has not increased average daily attendance funding for Texas schools since twenty nineteen. And whereas Isleta ISD is a public school district comprised of approximately five thousand four hundred and ninety-eight staff members who support the learning of approximately thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty students through diverse, high-quality educational opportunities. And whereas Isleta ISD provides a high-quality education to every student who lives within its boundaries and seeks an education at the district, including students with special needs, despite underfunded and unfunded mandates from the Texas Legislature. And whereas private schools in Texas may choose to deny educational services to students for any variety of reasons, are not required to meet the same academic standards as public schools, and lack publicly elected board oversight. And whereas states with universal voucher programs have incurred significant additional costs by extending eligibility to many students already enrolled in private schools, underscoring that vouchers or education saving accounts primarily benefit school attendees and effectively serve as taxpayer-funded subsidies for affluent families. And whereas a Texas taxpayer-funded private school voucher or education savings account would divert public funds from Y I S D without offering students the same educational assessments and deliverables, protections, or school accountability standards. Now, therefore, being resolved that, the Texas Legislature must take action to ensure the full and adequate funding of public schools by increasing the basic allotment and establishing a mechanism for automatic inflation-adjusted increases to the basic allotment every biennium. And any deliberate discussions by members of the Texas Legislature concerning funding of public education should be based on need and merit and remain completely independent from deliberations regarding education savings account or any other mechanisms aimed at diverting public funds away from public schools. And the Texas Legislature should oppose the diversion of any public funds to pay for or subsidize private schools through any matter, including educational saving accounts, vouchers, taxpayer savings credits, or other means that would further diminish already inadequately funded public schools. Mr. Vice President, I would like to move to approve this. You will, you will be able to have discussion before we vote. But I would like to make the motion to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for reading it. We really appreciate that. I want to first thank Y T A for bringing this forward. This has been a battle with the state for many years now. And to have this documented, the fight that you all are doing and that we're now joining with you in, with this resolution, I just want to thank you for your courage, for your dedication, for everything that you do for our students, our teachers, and all of our employees, and going out there and, and making the voice heard of, of our employees and the people that you represent. It's extremely, it's extremely, I, I just wanted to express as a board member, we have a budget surplus, and we are nickel and diming our budget as we come forward in, in, in May. And the reality is, we're having to nickel and dime because of where Governor Abbott has put us. And so I fully support this resolution. And anything that I continue, I can continue to do as a board member to support this charge, I'm more than happy to do it. But I do want to thank you all for your dedication and for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Trustee Hernandez and Trustee Lucero. I think for, for eight years, I've been on this board already, and you know where I stand. Thank you, guys, for, for what you do. We appreciate you. You know, we love our teachers, we love our students. And you know where I stand on that, and especially this board after eight years. So thank you, and we continue to fight with you. With no further discussion. With no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion?
Mr. Vice President, I move to approve a Board Resolution in Support of Legislative Action to Adequately Increase Public School Funding and Reject Vouchers for Education Saving Account Schemes as presented.
I have a mover as Mr. Hernandez, the second by Mike Dwyer. All votes are in. The motion passes. Five yes or no? Thank you. Number two, Award of Y S D Solicitation Two Two Five Zero Zero Nine R F P Employee Health Benefits for Medical Benefits Third-Party Administration and Related Components Pharmacy Benefits Manage, Manager Services and Stop Loss. Is there any discussion? If there are no further discussions, may I have an electronic motion? Motion, we have a motion by Mr. Mark Dwyer. Motion, we have a motion by Mr. Mark Dwyer and second by Ms. Connie Woodruff.
I move to approve award under YSD Solicitation Number 225009 RFP, Employee Health Benefits, Components of Fully Insured and/or Self-Funded Medical Administrative Services, Cobra Administrations, FSA, and HSA Administration, Employee Assistant Program Services, and Stop Loss to Aetna for its ACO Plan as described in the board backup. In addition, approve award component of Pharmacy Benefit Manager Service to Aetna's CVS during the period of January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028, with the possibility of two one-year extensions contingent upon final negotiations, in-house council review, and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
All votes, I believe all votes are in. And we have, uh, four yes and one no. Number three, nomination of Texas Association of School Boards 2025 Superintendent of the Year. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Woodruff.
I just want to say that this is long in coming. We've, uh, nominated Dr. Delatorre several times. And for whatever reason, our region kind of refuses to acknowledge, uh, the great work that he has done and the great work, work our district has done. And so, um, it's long overdue and I am more than hopeful that this time we're going to have the Superintendent of the Year working here at Isleta Independent School District.
I agree. I agree, Ms. Woodruff. Anybody else? Well, you got it now.
I, I, I just want to say, um, you know, since I've been elected, I've been nothing but impressed, as I've said many times. Um, very excited, uh, that we're getting this letter out for nominating Dr. Delatorre for 2025 Superintendent of the Year. Uh, we all know it's well-deserved and, uh, hopefully they will be in agreeance. So thank you for all that you do, Dr. Delatorre.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say that whether you win or not, in the eyes of this board, you are doing an excellent job. And when we come time and it's, each, each year we, we do your review and the, the humbleness that you present forward in leading this district in a way that, um, you have actually made sacrifices that others might not do. And so whether you win or not, in my eyes, you're very much appreciated.
Thank you, Trustee Lucero. Um, just very quickly, I appreciate it. I view it as, uh, an endorsement of, of all of our work. Um, I share it, uh, with you and I share it, uh, I especially share it with, uh, members of, uh, my cabinet, uh, including, uh, and especially those seated in the corner. Um, and I'm sure that, uh, they'll tell you that a lot of the great work happens because we're very, very particular about, uh, who leads our schools and who stands in the four corners of the classroom. So I am honored, uh, to once again go to Region 19 and try and charm them and, and convince them, um, to give me a hug and let, let me be their Superintendent of the Year for Region 19. I mean, if they, if they ever want a chance to have a Texas State Superintendent of the Year, they'll listen, right? But no, seriously, it, it really is, I think, uh, I, I accept it on behalf of everybody in the Isleta Independent School District. That's why I've chosen, uh, to make this my last district and to make El Paso my home. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Delatorre. Like he says, teamwork is a dream work. I think this whole, it comes down from, you know, the board to Dr. Delatorre.
Can I say one last thing before I get in? And I wouldn't forget these two ladies over here, and I think everybody knows that. I almost took them for granted. Sorry, ladies. I know, we'll talk in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely dream work, teamwork, right? All right, so with no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? We have a motion by Mr. Chris Hernandez and second by Ms. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, uh, to approve the board resolution and letter nominating Dr. Delatorre for 2025 Superintendent of the Year by the Texas Association of School Boards.
All votes are, have been casted. It passes five yes, zero no. Good luck. Number four, authorization for the sa- sale of real, real property located near Cadwalder at T L C C campus. Is there any discussion? There's no further discussion. May I have an electronic motion? We have a motion by Trustee Mike Dwyer and a second by Connie Woodruff.
Now, um, God, this is close to home because I attended Cadwalder Elementary a long time ago. I move to approve a mending resolution for the sale of a portion of YISD property located at 7980 Alameda, near Cadwalder, T L C C, to the El Paso Water Utilities Public Service Board, and further delegate authority to the superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute related contract for sale and other matters incidental thereto and subject to final review and approved by in-house counsel.
Thank you. All votes have been casted. Results are in. We have five in favor and zero opposed. Now to our closed session. This Board of Trustees is determined to, closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551001, including, including but not limited to the sections proposed covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code 551, 017, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, 84, 87, and 89. Should any final action decision or vote be required with regards to any matter considering the closed session, the final action decision or vote shall be in open meeting or subsequent to public meeting with notice. This board will now go into closed session in the real grand room at 7:49.
By the way, Jeff, I see what y'all did. Do you guys see their shirts? That's the association. Wow. And the royalties aren't even that expensive.
trustee Connie Woodruff, trustee Catherine Nusseto, and myself Charlie Bustillos at 8:17. Action item after closed session, consider the approval of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. May I have a motion? We have a motion by trustee Woodruff and a second by trustee Hernandez.
Mr. Vice President, I move we approve the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings as discussed in closed session.
Thank you. All votes have been casted. All votes have been casted. The results are in. Five approved with zero no. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you guys.